I have a meeting here in my.
Yeah.
I have a meeting here in my.
Yeah.
Michael, I think I cleared out my computer for whatever reason. I don't know if you're going to agenda down or I mean this is probably something I saved a lot to my.
It really is.
Because I had this.
Yeah, this is probably one we did before to the format.
So you're not missing council meetings? Oh, I said we just.
CCM.
Is there only water? Is it only water? We need something more. Thank you.
Tough line.
Call the Tuesday, June nineteenth town council meeting to order at seven oh five P M. Start first with salute to the flag.
Okay, if you want to see.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Diddy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Candelora.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Fawnen.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Rose. Councilor Big Leone.
Here.
Councilor Zampano.
Here.
Councilor Rose is going to be a few minutes late. Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, June fifth, two thousand eighteen, Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council.
So moved with the following corrections on page ten, item D. In paragraph seven, it says town manager, town manager Duquesne, so it should be town planner. And then two paragraphs after that, it has North Branford Fire Department. And it should be the ambulance building regarding the signs.
Second. Any other corrections? Um. Roll call.
Mayor Diddy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Abstain.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. There was an item in our, at our desk in its, in regards to setting the mill rate. So it would be item nine H to amend the agenda for setting the mill rate.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Diddy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Big Leone.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampano.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into the regular town council minute meeting. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions, technical management, development commission.
Uh, they, uh, they haven't met since the last meeting. However, I have to do stuff and put at your desk, uh, in front of you, uh, this, uh, document on manufacturing. And I just wanted to, uh, give you a copy of that and, and just kind of give you a quick, quick story that Roger Sawway's, uh, been very busy in terms of making, um, meetings and meeting with individual economic development professionals within the region and the state. Roger has a pretty extensive, um, business contact list and he's tied into quite a few, um, uh, experts in the field of manufacturing, the field he ca- he came from. So one of them is a gentleman that has formed A M G Partners, uh, which is a, like, a manufacturing, um, expertise firm. And, uh, they're working together to, to percolate this concept that in Connecticut, uh, we really have a shortage of skilled workers for advanced manufacturing, which is Roger's expertise as he came out of, uh, John Deere. And, uh, the notion is to, to begin the dialogue within the region here for New Haven, to talk about opportunities to create this blueprint for, uh, building a pipeline for manufacturing skilled labor. So I wanted you, uh, as a council, to, to have a advanced copy and look at it, uh, as we begin to have these, uh, conversations with professionals like Rex, uh, with our state representative who came in yesterday, um, other D E C D officials and so forth, um, to try and, you know, put North Branford in the mix of this discussion to talk about how to attract manufacturers. If you are able to build this blueprint for this pipeline of skilled workers. So when you talk about the state of Connecticut, um, trying to meet fifteen thousand jobs by two thousand twenty-three, w- we're not nearly close to building the pipeline to, to meet that. When you talk about Electric Boat and all of the other, um, org, uh, companies that feed Sikorsky and United Technologies, um, Pratt and Whitney's, it's ju- we're not even coming close. So, um, I think the state of Connecticut recognizes that. They're working on it. And I think Roger sees, uh, North Branford and, and New Haven region as being at the table with those discussions. So, um, it's a conversa- it's a conceptual, uh, idea, uh, and it's a, trying to develop the blueprint right now. So I just wanted to, not that you need to take any action or anything, but I just wanted you to be aware of it. We'll continue to have dialogue around, uh, advanced manufacturing.
Thank you.
Michael, how would someone get a hold of him? You know, like if someone's watching this, they might have got a hold of the economic developer?
Yeah.
Just call.
Yeah, just call right here, town, just, just the main number. We'll forward you down, uh, four eight four six thousand and we'll get, we'll get you down to, to Roger.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and he is, um, you know, he is doing, um, making contact, trying to get out there to, uh, meet, uh, other business owners and to stop in to introduce himself, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, Park and Recreation.
Uh, their meeting is next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth.
Police Commission.
The Police Commission met on June eleventh. Um, in addition to the regular items, there was a presentation by Silver Petricelli and Associates, the architects. And you, in your packet or in the, um, laptop, you have, uh, four different options in terms of the police facility. And I would just like to mention that in terms of the Police Commission, they would recommend either option three or option four. Option three would be in addition to the building, option four would be a new building. It's interesting, the difference between the two, options three and four is about seventy thousand dollars. I know that could probably change a bit, but they would like to recommend, um, either option three or four. What I would ask is, is it possible to put this item on the agenda? Maybe you have a presentation for the town council by the architects, um, get a better understanding of what those four options are. The other, um, two other items, um, the Police Commission is very appreciative of the efforts of the police officers this year to, um, really pitch in and help considering the fact that they really were short with personnel. And you'll see later on, there are some transfers that they've requested. And I think the Police Commission is, is really appreciative that the, the police did what they did so that they could perhaps make some of those transfers. And hopefully the council will, will approve those. And the last item is, for your knowledge, the body cameras are now in, but they will ha- have the training sometime in the mid, mid of, uh, middle part of July. And that's it.
Thank you. Michael, when can you fit that on for the architects?
I can go the next meeting, uh, I turn, and put that on.
Okay.
July tenth meeting.
Thank you.
I mean, subject to their schedule, but I hope, I hope they're available and I'll make contact with the architects and give them notice.
Fire Commission.
Uh, Fire Commission, they met last Thursday, I believe it was. The, uh, Engine One was having the work, Engine One is the company up here, Company One. We're having the motor rebuilt. That's all done. It's finished. I talked to people, they said they did a great job on it and the cost of it was eighteen, came to eighteen thousand dollars, around eighteen thousand. Uh, the second thing, the second thing is, uh, something, and Anthony's going to have to help me out here, with the Company One, one of the trucks, they want to take it out of service and combine another truck with it. And if you can help me out, Anthony, I didn't quite understand the whole thing.
Uh, there was a concept that was discussed at the, uh, Fire Commission meeting of, uh, Emergency One is probably the most heaviest used piece of apparatus, two thousand suburban, goes to all the home medicals and things like that. Brush One is an older vehicle, it doesn't get used that often. And the thought is if they're going to, the money that you gave them in this year's C I P eighteen nineteen will be the enough to do this, uh, for Company One. Potentially looking at taking two vehicles offline, the brush truck and the emergency unit and combining them, buying like an F four fifty, uh, pickup truck basically with a, uh, utility body on the back for storage area for the EMS supplies. And in the, uh, bed area, you put like a, a skid pump, it's called basically, you could take on and off and go off-road with it if need be. So the concept is being discussed at the Fire Commission, uh, as, uh, Counselor Big Leone mentioned. And they, they hope that within the money that, um, you go folks allotted for July first, they'd be able to accomplish that without having to come back for additional funds. But it's still, it vary in the preliminary stages, but it's a, a concept to basically reduce the amount of the rolling stock by one and, uh, serve a purpose that hopefully will, will benefit the department. And the, the current brush truck is an older model, as I mentioned, it's a little bit, it's a standard transmission, it's a little bit harder to drive, uh, doesn't get to use that often. And in this case, you'd have the four-wheeler drive of the pickup truck with the skid unit in the back to go off-road if there was any kind of brush fire situation. So it'd be a, a rescue truck, emergency unit, if you will, as well as a, a four-wheeler drive brush unit to go off-road and, uh, fight brush fires. So it's being discussed, as, as Counselor mentioned, at the Fire Commission. And they're going to come forward, I believe, at your next meeting with the conceptual plans and present it to you folks.
Yeah, sounded like a good idea to me. Uh, and the last thing is, one more thing I want to mention, uh, the, the Fire Commission reappointed Chief Stewart for another three years. So we have him for another three years, he can be our chief. I thought, I thought that was a good move also. That's it.
Thank you. Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee.
Um, it's really not, there is a meeting scheduled for, um, just prior to our July tenth meeting. It's really not the subcommittee, we've invited the whole board, um, to come along with the superintendent and their head of security, Bob Piazak and Jimmy Lovelace, who is on the SWAT team. Um, and this is to talk about the issue of security, um, at the schools in light of everything that has been happening in the, around the country. And it's to give us, uh, the council an idea of exactly what the security measures are at school and to discuss, to see if we feel we need anything additional and how we would support them. So some of it would probably be executive session material, um, when they discuss the actual security measures. Um, and some of it is probably public session. And we're also on that agenda is the issue of, um, which we had talked about at a couple council meetings ago, uh, the superintendent, what the board has done in regards to preventing some of the issues that have come up in the past year or so, what policy changes they have made. So those are the two items that are on the agenda for July tenth meeting, um, and that's a six o'clock meeting.
Now, are we getting, um, at that, uh, July tenth meeting, um, are we getting a, an actual presentation from the police department on this? Or is the police department merely supplementing the schools' presentation?
I think they're supplementing the schools.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I think they're going to supplement the schools. There's no actual presentation.
Part of it was because, um, Lieutenant Lovelace is one of the members of the SWAT team. Um, they were going to give us information as to exactly what is involved, um, in an active shooter case, like what happens. And so that we can tie that into whatever security measures the schools have. And do we need to do more? Do we need, do they need additional equipment supplement to start the conversation with them?
You know, it's not just schools that are affected, you know, the, the churches are affected, uh, but public events are affected. So I, I would like to not be limited and end with, uh, the, the schools' plans. I'd like to hear from the police department on other aspects of this community and what they, uh, would think for these types of incidents.
We'd have to just broaden it a little bit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Well, uh, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, and I'm not so sure that we can accomplish all of that in the one-hour meeting with the item.
And that's perfectly all right. I'm just, uh, not looking for it to end as a one-hour meeting because this is a, uh, an issue that can emerge in so many other, uh, areas.
Yeah, we could get, we could, we could definitely get their feeling, um, at another meeting, we could have the police department committee give us a presentation on SWAT, SWAT.
I think that would be, uh, very desirable.
Okay. Michael, you can set that up later.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'll, I'll s- speak to Lieutenant and, and, uh, let him know that you're looking to go beyond the.
Just, yeah, beyond just the schools.
The schools, yeah.
Next is Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
Uh, the subcommittee met this evening and we reviewed the letter to go out to department heads and the forms. I have to give a lot of credit to Carrie Duquesne, who came up with, uh, some changes in my format. I thought she was very helpful, um, and Mike helped as well. And I think, and Franny came in and gave us some, his advice. I think, uh, we're, we're well on our way. We're hopefully going to get that letter and the forms out to the department heads, to give them the whole summer. Because I think Rosia, that was a good suggestion. And then we'll have that information beginning of September.
Because this is going to tie into the plan of conservation and development, which is now working on.
Right. Right. Exactly. So she had some good suggestions.
Yeah. So that's good.
Uh, Public Safety Communications Committee.
No meeting.
Planning and zoning commission.
Well, the next meeting's, uh, on the twenty-first, Thursday.
East Shore Health District Department. Uh, next is Town Manager's Work, Route Eighty Bridge Update.
Yeah, just a couple of brief updates. Uh, not much has changed, uh, although Kurt may have, have picked up something. I'd just like to keep this on and should something come up, we want to maybe have a, communicate with the council and the community at large in, in terms of the, as that project progresses and they build the temporary bridge and make the switch over. We're going to have some, um, you know, some issues and, and something we want to keep monitoring, so. Um, as far as I know, they're, they're moving along unless, Kurt, have you got anything new?
Just to update you on the timeframe, they're looking about somewhere between the tenth and the fifteenth of July to switch traffic over to the temporary bridge. Um, they're still looking for completion, um, the end of this year. Uh, they've run into a few issues with utilities, moving poles, the, the storm threw them off a little bit. They're trying to make that up. Uh, they still think it's all still possible. So, uh, I'll update you as, as, as things progress. But again, it's sometime, by the middle of July, they'll be over to the temporary, uh, bridge and then they'll be working on the, the permanent structure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
FEMA Storm Update.
Uh, again, just a brief, um, we're, we're tracking this. We have not heard of the official declaration yet, um, but that is still in the works, just waiting for notification there. Uh, there may be some information and we can pick up at the, uh, cog meeting next week. Typically, they have, uh, representatives from, uh, Congresswoman Rosa Delora's office, uh, and our senators, both senators, uh, represented at those meetings. And typically they convey and will have the latest update on where FEMA is on making that declaration if we don't get it before then. Uh, so we'll continue to monitor that and, and see what, see what happens.
Thank you. N B I S Rooflight Update.
Yeah, just wanted to let you know that they're very close. Uh, they're down to the last five, uh, items that they're working on. Uh, and talking with Bill Chody, he thought that they could complete this by July first. And so for the July tenth meeting, I'd like to try and, and summarize where, where they're at, uh, sit, you know, meet with him, go through that. Uh, and Anthony and I, I'll have to work with Anthony to get through the, the accounting and, and just give the council, uh, an update on where we are financially. And hopefully we can move forward with closing that project out. Given any other hiccups that happened between now and July first, I think we're on track to, to fix that. So I'll, I'll put this on and report back for the July tenth meeting.
Thank you. Next item is community events and presentations. Seeing them, uh, citizens' statements, petitions, and correspondence.
Hi there. Um. Oh. Um, I, I got in contact with, uh, Mike and he said this is probably the best time to do this, but I wanted to, um, just, um, bring up, uh, potential idea. Oh, yeah. Um, I should know this by now. Uh, Alex Lee Francesco, uh, Forty-Something Lager Road. Uh, I'm just here as a resident and as a farmer tonight, um, just to clear out. But, um, anyways, uh, I was chatting with Mike, uh, last week and, um, the parcel, uh, I always call it the old Reynolds Farm. Uh, it's the, the parcel that's across from Potato and Corn Fest that we sometimes use as overflow parking in years past, sometimes for, uh, volunteers. Um, I think that's the same parcel that's on one of the idea plans for doing with the, the police station, uh, moving it and stuff like that. Uh, that parcel, uh, I know my family came with, uh, last year to approach the committee, potentially leasing it or buying it. Um, new developments have happened with other parcels that we currently rent and, uh, adjacent towns in this town. And we're looking to use different land. Um, one of the, the old properties that we've been using the past few years and resting our own land that we own, um, is sold this past year and it looks like we won't have access to those eighty acres that we've been farming. Uh, that's a lot of land to just lose and not have to be able to rotate crops and everything. This parcel is a magnitude beneath what we've been farming, uh, for what's tillable land. Uh, as some of you guys know, like that, uh, the plastic rows that we do for peppers, squash, all of that, there's maybe seven to eight acres there that are tillable that we might be able to use, uh, for that land. And I've, I've been talking with my brothers, considering, do we want to approach you guys to possibly lease that? Or do we want to see if buying it is an option? Um, a few of the options came up were, um, putting an investment into that land for our farm and looking into extending our irrigation from the adjacent land that we currently have been farming for the past, uh, four decades next to it into that land. Um, it wouldn't make sense to do that if we're just leasing that, putting all that pipe work in. Um, in addition, uh, one of the ventures I want to do is to expand our hop yard that's in the adjacent lot there. And just doing an acre of hops, doing an expansion like that with all the materials between the, the toll poles, the telephone poles, the aircraft cabling, everything, you're looking into just an acre, a ten thousand dollar investment just to set up that perennial crop, uh, that takes three to five years to fully mature. So saying something like that up on a lease versus something that you own, it's a little difficult. Um, but is, I talked with Mike last week and he said, bring it up to you guys. I know this is possibly, uh, a piece of land that you might consider moving the police station down to. Um, but I figure, well, I want to see if you guys want to keep this as farmland as it's been farmland, um, since I can remember, uh, growing up in this town. Uh, it's always been hayed. Um, but I figured bringing this idea up to you guys, if you want to talk on it or whatnot, uh, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Savistano, a little later in your meeting, you're going to be talking about a generator at the police department. And I just, for the heck of it, I just Googled what a hundred and twenty-five watt kilowatt generator would be. And you get four prices right across the board, right, all around thirty thousand. And I see every one of these was fifty, fifty-three, fifty-four. Does anybody check? There was, if you want to buy a car, do you check what the price is before you get out there so you have a, a ballpark for this? I know the bid process is one thing and that has to be in order, but do you just take for granted that the first price is honest? Or people building a lot of, a lot of money into products right off the bat so that in case they need to be talked down, like buying a car? And I've noticed this on other bid processes, obviously since you've been able to put the full package of the, packet of the agenda on, I do a little more reading. But I noticed that we just seem to be, uh, just taking their word for it. Does somebody actually bargain with these people or question it, Michael say? Next.
Seeing none, we'll move into resignation appointment, resignation of Frank Bergantino from C I W W A.
Yeah, and, um, Carrie had mentioned, this is for the inland wetlands, um, she had mentioned that there's another one, uh, coming, uh, in terms of resignation. So she's, she's requesting the council, um, or wanted me to bring to the attention of the council that she's going to need, uh, replacements.
Get it back to, I know they, last, um, Republican Town Committee meeting, they mentioned Frank. So they're trying to find a replacement for him.
Okay, great.
I'm not sure if the other one's a Republican or Democrat, Slav.
Yeah, I don't have the, I don't know the makeup of that.
We'll have to look at it. Next, item unfinished business, discussion in action, approval of proposed ordinance, twenty seventeen dash one, chapter forty, entitled Fire Department. It's tabled until July. Next is future budget plan initiative.
I don't have any.
Next item is review of possible selection of commercial solar as consultant for solar project. I don't think we got any information back on that yet.
Uh, yeah, they provided some, some, uh, it's in the packet in terms of some additional information, but, uh, by and large, we still need more time and, and, uh, to research and vet, uh, the projects. And also the, uh, issue with the Z rec auction has been kicked back to August, so that gives us, uh, time to, uh, to review and to look at. I have a call into Mottville, which was one of the, um, project towns and I've heard back from them yet. And, and in fact, uh, Counselor Zampano had suggested, you know, also maybe even a site visit, uh, to, to look and talk with them, uh, on the site and to gather additional information. So no, I, I would suggest probably tabling this, uh, this item and, uh, I'll continue to gather information, uh, for the July meeting.
Motion to table?
So move.
Second.
Date? July first meeting in July, we have one meeting in July.
There's only one.
Yeah, just, just the, July tenth meeting.
All right, so moving back to July tenth. Next item is new business discussion in action, bid award number ten, retirement plan investment consultant.
Yeah, uh, I don't think that this came about as a result of the, uh, rather lukewarm, poor, uh, investment returns we've had on our retirement plan for, uh, close to the last two years. Uh, we, uh, as a subcommittee decided that, uh, it was probably appropriate to seek, uh, other investment advisors. We issued a request for a proposal, got, I believe, seven responses. Uh, rather voluminous responses from each potential investment advisor, uh, disseminated them to the subcommittee and, uh, we came back and came to a consensus as to three of the, uh, bidders to, uh, bring back for an interview. Uh, we did that and, uh, had a presentation from three of the, uh, parties that were, had made proposals. We.
We, at the conclusion of their presentations, decided both on the basis of the cost they were proposing associated with their services and their history, track record, and proposals in terms of administering our plan. Felt most comfortable with Hooker and Holcomb, which we already have a relationship with, as a fiduciary advisor for the, which plan is it, Anthony?
Four fifty-seven, four oh one eight.
We engaged them about a year ago for that purpose. This would be for the purpose of administering the three principal plans for police, fire, and the general plan for town employees. Hooker and Holcomb's fee, annualized fee is a flat fee of seventeen thousand dollars, which happened to be the best or lowest fee of the seven proposals made. And the presentation they made was as good or better than any of the others that we were privy to that evening. So that is the recommendation of the subcommittee that we engage Hooker and Holcomb, subject to this town council approving that recommendation.
You're making the suggestion motion, yeah?
I'll make the motion, here, here.
No, I can't find it.
I'll make it, it's page ninety-four. Be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council, based on the recommendation of the Pension Committee, hereby directs the town manager and treasurer finance director to sign the necessary documents to engage the firm of Hooker and Holcomb to become the advisor to the town's three defined benefit pension plans and transition the funds away from Morgan Stanley as soon as possible.
Second discussion. Is there a period of time that we're committing for?
No, not really. There's no contract that I'm aware of, we haven't been presented with one. And it is basically an arrangement that lasts as long as they're inclined to continue to provide a service at the fee that they're quoting us and as long as we're inclined to engage them.
I would think in all fairness, that having to give them some time to develop a track record, you can't, six months later, say you guys are doing poor and replace them. You need to give them some time to mature the funds and get the policies. I believe there was talk about a three-year clause in there, but as Counselor Fornin might mention, it's at our discretion, thirty days' notice to withdraw.
And the committee is reviewing, reviewing these things quarterly?
We meet with them quarterly and more often if there is a pressing issue that comes up, there may be a special meeting, but at minimum, they're quarterly meetings.
Anthony, did you find out, is there a transaction fee to move from Morgan?
I did not get a chance to ask before, no.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fornin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Vic Leon.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Next item is bid award RFP eleven, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, Police Department Emergency Operations Center Generator.
Yeah, there's a complete packet in your folder. The lowest bidder, we had to step over because they were, it was incomplete. So the Northeast Generator is the award winner there. There's a memo there from Michelle Knockwood as we, and outlines the process and specifically, I think, what was deficient when the non-responsive bidder. They did not provide how long they'd been in business, references, and proof of their ability to complete the project as specified. Northeast Generator has already performed for the town of North Branford, installing the generator company number three and for number one. So it's a recommendation to go with Northeast.
Well, is this something we want to do in view of the information we were just given that perhaps merits some investigation as to why all these bids are approximately twice what somebody just got casually going on the internet?
Yeah, I'm not sure that it's, again, I don't know.
I can't see a size in these bid documents as to what the amps are. You know, I know that's a two hundred amp generator up there and there's a two hundred amp switch. So I often see concerns if Bill said it was one twenty-five.
Kilowatt.
Yeah, well, it's a two hundred kilowatt now and it's a two hundred amp kilowatt switch, automatic transfer switch now. So I can't see why we're going to one twenty-five, especially if they were going to add on to the building and everything else.
Well, the other thing is, is if we're going ahead with the police department, do you want to do the generator now if we're?
My understanding is that that's, you can move that generator, it's not something that's permanent?
You can move it, but it's going to be costly too. You know, it depends on if they got to pull out the old transfer switch or they're going to use that switch, you know, there's.
Because I asked that question, I was told that it was okay because it can be transported.
Yeah, but it's, it doesn't have a lot of hours on it now. I'm not sure what the hours are on it, but it doesn't have a lot of hours on it.
You mean the existing one?
Yeah, I don't, I think it'd be foolish to try to put a new one in and then move it, you know, six months down the road.
Well, is the one we have now broken?
No.
So why would we buy another one?
It's never failed yet, that I know of.
So I understand, is this, this is a grant, correct?
Well, that's what, that was my next question.
There's a piece of it that was a grant, I think fourteen thousand dollars or something.
Yeah.
It's all state grant.
It's all grant?
The whole thing? That has to be spent by?
Fourteen thousand by June thirty, then a piece of it, you know.
So I think it's.
Does this run off a diesel only?
Yes.
Yes.
And the other generator cannot be used somewhere else?
Certainly.
That we may need?
My thing would be, see if we can put it in limbo for a couple of.
Well, is the current, is the current generator, Mike, did I hear you say the current generator is?
Two hundred KW.
Right, so these are, these are smaller.
Well, I didn't see a size, did you say?
Yeah, it's one twenty-five.
It's one twenty-five.
Well, that's foolish then, to go to small.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, especially if we're going to go to a bigger police department, possibly.
Who selected that size, Anthony, do you know?
I think the bid spec out, well, it was one twenty-five or two hundred, I forgot exactly how it was worked. But I think when it came before the council, we flipped the cabinet, we flipped as they had alternated two hundred amps. So I tried a kilowatt service in the generator. I didn't recall seeing the responses, but I can check on the show.
Well, on the bid specs, only one, one company bid two, one as a fifty kilowatt and the other as a one twenty-five. There's nothing for two hundred. And none of the ad alternates say anything about a two hundred. It's one, an ad alternate for excavation and an ad alternate to install a pigtail plug on the building. Is that so that you can move it? Is that what a pigtail is?
Pigtail allows you to use another generator, if that generator happens to fail for whatever reason, you could bring, Fran has a mobile generator you can come and plug in.
Okay.
So basically, run a wire and a plug, it's like ten grand.
We probably have to run a whole box too. And decide what, what part of the building you could run on, whatever generator Fran brings over there, because I'm sure it's not going to run the air conditioning.
Yeah, there's just the dispatch center, that's the idea I heard, but I don't know if that's what they're talking about. But to your point about the, if you do build a new building, money has to be big enough.
That's what I'm saying, I'm sure one twenty-five's not big.
I wasn't in on the specs, so I'm just seeing it for the first time, but I don't know. I'm not sure we've got any information.
You sure we need an electrical?
But I think the idea was if something happened and dispatch, like let's say that they failed, just to keep dispatch open, they're going to put that all on a separate circuit. So we could plug them and the rest of the place won't blow up, but dispatch will still be running.
What's the, what's the generator that they have now powering when it's necessary?
The whole, it was the whole police station, but the fear is there's no backup.
So we want to back up to the backup?
Right. The backup to backup would be my generator, so.
But this would be a backup?
They're replacing.
Before your backup?
No, no, the backup generator is where the power goes off, then it runs the whole place.
Right, and this would, this would back up that one and yours would back up the new one?
The generator, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Because there is fears, I mean, it does happen, you know. Mine went the other day during, out of the storm, you know, all of a sudden it blew hose. I mean, that power wasn't a big deal for us, but it's a big deal for the PDA.
Sure.
I mean, dispatch center anyway.
Do we know the consultant that sized this generator?
I believe Ivy Electric was involved in sizing that request, it was a two hundred, so I'm surprised it's only the one twenty-five on there. I apologize.
I can't, I can't vote for going smaller, especially if they're going to have to build.
I remember when we looked at the other RFP, it had two hundred on it.
Yeah, the two hundred was in the spec, yeah. I might not have read the screen.
Unless somebody can tell us that a new addition can run on one twenty-five.
Not only that, there would be, as somebody mentioned, there would be a cost of moving.
Oh yeah?
You know.
So we probably could get a couple months ahead of that. Then maybe, somebody want to make a motion or do you want to table it?
I table, I think we should.
How can we table it, aren't we walking away from fourteen thousand dollars if we do that?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, because there's fourteen thousand that has to be.
By June thirties.
Right, but why would we, I know it's all grant money and none of the money's coming out of the town, but I don't know if I could support getting something smaller than what we already have. I just don't think we have enough information, there's too many questions that came up.
Could the grant be on?
You're going from a two hundred now to a one twenty-five without, without even sizing the building.
I think what I could offer, I mean, I'm going to try, is certainly ask for an extension on the deadline.
Is this a backup to the two hundred?
No, this is replacing the two hundred with a one twenty-five.
I think we have to collapse the bid and then rebid for, and re-size for the two hundred.
I mean, the engineers engineered the two hundred years ago when they did the addition. So I don't know how we went from two hundred to one twenty-five when Ivy Electric recommended two hundred in its present state. So, you have a motion to table?
I so moved.
Second? Second. Discussion? Roll call.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Bob.
Maybe we should have a copy of the RFP and the grant.
Somebody, somebody sizing it.
Yeah, maybe the grant has restrictions, I don't know.
Anthony, did you get a copy of the grant?
I'll talk to Mr. Buck, Mr. Buck can handle that.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fornin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Vic Leon.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
The next item is approval of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen lease purchase agreement, V O E Technology Computer Upgrade.
And your packet originally was the top half of the memo, the results had not come back by the time the agenda went out. Should have been at your desk tonight, I believe, the complete memo. Solicited typically every year, the Board of Ed enters into technology leases where they do four annual payments of seventy thousand dollars. I solicited to a variety of sources that I use. And this year, these are the four responses that I've received back. The most lucrative being municipal leasing consultants, which will provide us the buying power of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, zero, zero, seven, point forty worth of technology. You have some language in the motion and you have their resolution attached that is referenced in the motion for your review and approval.
Move the motion.
Do we have to read the whole motion or can we state?
Yeah, I just, I go toward the last one, be it further resolved, start there if you want, on the top of the first page.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, be it further resolved that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached resolution and authorizes Michael T. Paulus, town manager, and Anthony P. Esposito, junior CPFO, treasurer, finance director, to sign the necessary paperwork to enter into a lease purchase with municipal leasing consultants to acquire approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven dollars and forty cents net of fees of technology for the Board of Education, based on a four-year advanced funding interest rate of three point one seven percent per annum, subject to the review and approval by the town attorney's office. Second.
Discussion?
Michelle, can you just make sure all of this is attached to the minutes as part of the minutes?
Did you want me to type it in or just attach?
No, you can, you can make it as an attachment.
Attachment, okay.
And reference it in the minutes so that it's part of it.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fornin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vic Leon.
Yes.
Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Michelle, in the review on possible selection of commercial solar works as consultant or solar project, did we vote on that?
No, I think you're right, I think.
Table it.
No.
Oh, I remit the motion.
I am, I vote with all favor, but we can.
Yeah, we'll just vote on it.
Go on.
On the commercial solar works, the table it, just to vote.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelaora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fornin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vic Leon.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampano.
Yes.
Next item is review of Teamsters Health Insurance Plan.
Yeah, it's not so much a review as a update, as we go through the process. As you recall, Teamsters changed, I mean, I'm sorry, the public works unit, bargaining unit changed to Teamsters from Ask Me to Teamsters. Teamsters carries their own healthcare, health insurance plan that we are in the process. And one of the added advantages that that plan also allows for a certain amount of management, individuals, management positions to come into that same plan. And so that we have explored and looked at that option as viable for, in this case, managers being the administrative group for the town of North Branford. So we see that as advantageous and cost-saving to make that move. And that's, you know, something that's in the works right now. It had to be checked with the state in terms of our group to see where the other bargaining units would go in terms of the state plan. That has all been worked out and we're moving forward with the rest of the negotiations with respect to costs, if you will.
So all of that insurance can be in place as of July first?
Correct.
Okay, so what does this do to the self-insurance plan then, by the town pulling out?
Based on what I've been told by Board of Ed folks, the net impact is between two and three hundred thousand dollar increase in their premiums because the size of the pool went down, is that referring to?
Well, just, yeah, well, what, what is it going to, what effect is it going to have? Because we have all of this money that we put into the stock gap and, you know, the risk corridor.
Right.
And now that it looks like the whole town side is pulling out, so that only leaves the Board of Ed side into it. So moving forward, what does that do to the self-insurance plan?
Well, we still don't maintain the self-insurance pool because the Board of Ed, as you mentioned, is still on a self-insured plan. So the immediate impact that they're going to be.
So, the immediate impact that they're gonna be facing is because the pool was the entire population of town and Board of Ed. And when we extracted the town piece, leaving just the Board of Ed piece, Anthem gave them revised rates in fact for July first and it caused the two to three hundred thousand dollar increase in their bottom line premiums. So, that's the reality of it. I mean, whether we went to the state plan or the Teamsters plan or wherever we went to, by extracting us out of the Anthem mix, it generated a smaller pool. And you could speculate that maybe the healthier people might have pulled out and the unhealthier ones might have stayed and it's why the rates went up. That's purely actuarially, you know, generated numbers, so.
So then, the people that remain in that plan have to pay the difference?
They're gonna see higher rates, yes. The, the rates that they were given after the town was extracted, the rates did go up. I haven't seen the numbers myself yet. They went through the Board of Ed because they don't pertain to us anymore, quite honestly. But according to what information was relayed from the business manager and superintendent, that's about two to three hundred thousand dollar overall increase in the premiums.
So, so what happens if at some point in time in the next year, because I know they're entering negotiations with various groups, if they also pull out of the self-insurance plan?
Like I remember, there's also, there's gonna be a tail. Just because we leave June thirtieth, people that are going to the doctor today, let's say, for example, those, they won't get paid for maybe thirty, sixty, ninety days. So, it's not like it automatically, June thirtieth, you know, it's a cliff and everybody falls off. So, we need to have money left in there for the remaining part of our claims, whether it's people that are going to the state plan or the Teamsters plan to be adjudicated by, by Anthem. Once everything is done, there might be some money remaining in that, in that self-insurance, the risk corridor that pertains to our piece of it. At that point, it can come back to the council to be reassigned to use towards the medical premiums instead of having to put tax dollars towards it. Or we can leave it in there for the Board of Ed to use for their claims going forward. That's a decision the council will make. At that point, so once our final claims have all been paid out, the tail has finally come to an end. It might, it might take a while, I don't know.
Right, so if the, if the Board of Ed in the next year also comes out of the plan-
Correct.
It would be the same thing. You have the tail until-
All the plans are paid.
Until all the claims are paid on there.
Correct.
So if it ends on June thirtieth of next year and July first, everyone is in a different plan. Once all of those claims are paid as of June thirtieth-
Correct.
Then whatever money is remaining would come back to the town.
Most definitely, yes.
Okay.
So, the, so the net effect, there is no savings in the benefits then, right? What, what happens if everybody stayed in the plan?
Well, we're looking at a twenty percent increase in our Anthem rates that would have been pretty much devastating to the town. Would have been a significant increase, about, I think it was like four hundred and some odd thousand dollars of an increase over where we were last year. In both instances, with the state plan and the Teamsters plan, the rates have gone down from where they were last year. So, dollar-wise, it's gonna be gross dollar savings on the premium. The risk that we ran in the last couple of years, as was talked about before, the self-insurance, we had, we had some bad experience. And whether it was on this side or that side, it's not relevant. It's just a matter of we had a bad experience town-wide, caused the rates to go up, caused a lot of people to hit the stop loss, stop-loss numbers. Both of these new arrangements, whether it's the Teamsters or the state plan, are both fully insured. So that risk we had before of that gambling of people were gonna be healthy, not healthy, kind of goes away. So we're saving money on the premium. There's the no risk of, of anybody getting catastrophically ill. Seems to be a win-win situation.
But you just said the, with the pull-out, the, the administrators pulling out of there, or whoever pulling out of that plan is gonna increase the Board of Ed side.
Correct. All the town groups pulled out.
Right.
The highway, clerical, library, police, and administrators, all four groups, if you will, pulled out of the Anthem plans.
Right, which causes an, an increase.
In the Board of Ed side, correct.
Okay, so if all of those people stayed in and didn't pull out, would there be that increase?
Well, there was a twenty percent, there was a twenty percent increase.
There was a twenty percent increase globally on both sides of the fence. I don't have the exact number for you. What's the net, the net difference? I see what you're saying. What's, what's the net difference if we stood in with a twenty percent increase compared to what they're gonna be faced with up there?
Right.
I, I don't have the answer for it, it's off my head.
The two to three hundred thousand dollar-
Basically, listening to what you just said, it was gonna go up about four hundred thousand, both sides. And people pulled out and now it's going up three hundred thousand, both sides. If you, you know, because the taxpayers are paying that. The employees are not gonna pay that three hundred thousand.
Correct. Correct.
Well, that, that has not been determined yet.
Well, I've been here long enough to know the employees aren't gonna pay three hundred thousand dollars.
No, but at, at the last Board of Ed meeting, they did talk about that additional increase in the insurance. And that's one of the reasons that the board has not finalized their budget yet on the Board of Ed side. Because Don said that they are going to be meeting with all of the bargaining groups. And what, what they are presenting, I have no idea. But I know that they have not met with the bargaining units yet and time is getting close. The board is meeting next Thursday and that's when they're gonna finalize their budget. So I, I don't know how they're gonna handle that additional increase. But you are absolutely correct. I mean, they wouldn't pay the whole two to three hundred thousand. They may have to pay a percentage or they may have something else that's planned. But in any event, it still would be an increase.
And when, when Mike and I met with Scott and Don, we floated the idea out there of them coming over to the state plan as well. And I did bounce that off the folks at the state and it wasn't in time for July first, but it could have been maybe in August or September first, you know, if they wanted to get everybody on board and move over. So that, that definitely is out there as well as another option.
Okay.
So, Anthony, if we got below the number of people that are in the self-insurance group.
Right. You run, you run the risk of a small, very small pool where you're gonna, even combining us, the size of the pool couldn't really tolerate those blips. You're a hundred percent right. So now with a smaller pool, you really can't tolerate big blips in medical insurance. So, it kind of is forcing almost the next move. What's the next move, you know? Do you look, going back to the fully insured, do you look at another option like the state plan? Because the, the smaller pool, you're right, cannot, cannot absorb the sickness of people. You saw, even including us, it couldn't absorb that, that sickness. So, by making the pool smaller, you're right, the, the risk you're running is, you're increasing the risk. You're gambling more, quite honestly.
On the Board of Ed side, look at the Teamsters.
However, the, again, having gone through this so many times and, you know, the, if we had the same illnesses and had been fully insured, the insurance would have gone up.
Right. Your claims are your claims.
We're getting the savings by jumping chip.
Right.
But if we were just as sick this year going forward, our insurance is gonna go up just as much next year, no matter how we insure ourselves.
Correct. Your, your, your claims dictate the whole situation and unfortunately, we have some poor experience on claims. That, as Al's correct, whether we were fully insured and self-insured, Anthem has to recoup that money somehow.
Right.
So the subsequent year, you see the, the rate increase and you're gonna pay it, you know, pay me now, pay me later kind of thing, unfortunately. And, you know, they're in the business to make money, so, um, I don't know. That was research as far as them coming to the state plan. There was some interest as potentially an option to, to solve the problem. And at the time, they couldn't get in for a July first date, but certainly they can get in subsequently, whether it's August, September, October, maybe the beginning of a quarter in October. Might, might be feasible, assuming that the Board of Ed folks, the employees and the, and the Board of Ed, you know, agrees to that.
Right.
Hey Vin.
And then?
So, how, going forward, being part of a union-controlled benefit, how does management negotiate a contract? Isn't there a conflict?
You're talking, what contract are you talking about?
Like, like a contract. Yeah, like a Teamster contract, for instance.
It's part of the collective bargaining process.
Right. Right.
So, when the contract comes up for-
No, he's talking about-
The next time it comes up for a contract.
Well, that was done as, that was done as part of this, correct me if I'm wrong, that was done as part of this current collective bargaining negotiation.
No, I think his point is-
Right, my, my point is, in three years, when the contract is, is up for renegotiation, who's gonna be negotiating?
Because management now has one of the benefits that's in the contract. That's your-
Right.
Okay. Well, generally speaking, and depending upon which bargaining unit's contract we're looking at, the insurance that has to be provided, and again, the language is slightly different depending upon which contract we're talking about, is similar or equivalent to what is currently being provided. So if you're saying in three years from now, are, is the town gonna have a difficulty in addressing insurance with a specific bargaining unit because of the benefits being received by the non-union workers?
Right.
Right? Well, the non-union workers really kind of get what they get, all right? Because you, you have the right to, to change from their, their insurance. They don't have a bargaining unit to negotiate with or through. So, it really, it, it depends on at that point in time. So at this moment in time, if they're going over to the Teamsters plan and in three years from now, in a hypothetical world, a bargaining unit that is currently in the Teamsters plan is leaving the Teamsters plan, that could affect the eligibility of the non-union workers to be in that plan. Because it could be dependent upon the number of employees that are a part of, that have to be part of the plan. So I think the non-union workers are gonna have to deal with on a, you know, at that point in time. But they're not part of a negotiation?
No, but some of the-
Maybe I'm not understanding your question.
Some of the administrators are part of the negotiating team on, on behalf of the town, negotiating a contract. That's my question. So if they're, how are they, how are they, how are they looking at the best interests of the town if they're participating in some of the benefits the union?
So, is your concern is, does, or does anyone who is part of the negotiating team have a potential conflict of interest?
Correct.
Uh, because the benefit that that individual may receive is part of some, but that, uh, isn't necessarily the case. So I think it has to be evaluated around case, but does this-
And even, and I asked that question of, of the current negotiator, Courtney, would be the lead negotiator along with, in this case, now Marie Diamond or whoever the council appoints as liaison for three years from now. That would be the negotiating team and I would be out of that healthy insurance.
The example, I can't think, the, the example that the, the chief receives benefits based on what the bargaining unit gets. So when you come to that point of the discussion, he recuses himself. So, similarly, we should have, but, so it would be a similar process.
It just seems unusual.
Well, you know, it's, unfortunately, you deal with it and that's why you, again, you have a group that's doing it. It's not an individual that's doing it.
Okay.
Anthony, just one last question on the self-insurance. We, we budget right in the risk corridor during budget time, right?
We didn't-
We didn't, didn't change it.
We didn't put anything, we were at eighty-three percent of the risk corridor amount and we didn't put anything in because we were gonna wait to see once exactly what was happening with negotiations. And if we had to, we could always take out of contingency to put into the risk corridor. We, we didn't do anything for the eighteen, nineteen budget.
All right, so then that's not gonna be affected with this?
Correct, correct.
All right, that was a good question, okay.
Next, financial report, May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Report's actually remarkable this month. Make some comments. Revenue continues to be ahead of prior year's pace. A hundred point nine percent of budget total revenue grew to ninety-eight point four. There are some departments that are showing up over expended, most notably being the Town Attorney's account. Town council numbers are over a little bit. Employee benefits slightly over. Debt service is showing a hundred and one percent and that's because the costs of the refinancing were not budgeted this year. There was also revenue that came in to offset those, but the expenses paying for the bond, council, things like that are showing up as a, as an expenditure, over expenditure. Miraculously, Mr. Morolla maintains not being over budget. Eighty-six point seven percent, actually better than last year, eighty-eight point four percent last year. He's actually running on a wing and a prayer up there. Anybody has any comments or questions? I'd be happy to address them.
Yeah, I noticed in state grants for education, why is there such an increase over the budget?
You recall that this was the whole issue last year, what number we were gonna get, not gonna get. And we budgeted very conservatively, seventeen, eighteen, and the numbers came in really in our favor quite a bit. I don't have the exact sheet in front of me, but there was, um, there was a state revenue was up and I, I'll, I'll have a sheet for you. I can send a sheet out through the email. But that was the case that we, the numbers we were given at one point in time were very low and very conservative. That was the whole point about second tax bills, that whole crazy time we were worrying about. And then when the numbers came in, they came in way in our favor. So it's gonna show as, as a, as a surplus. We had talked about spending the money, I forget what the, what the, I got another sheet with me tonight, but there was talk about the overages and, and what to do with that extra money. It was going back to the fund balance, if I recall. We took additional money out of the fund balance. I, I don't know.
I mean, this is, this is a difference of, it's a little bit over one point three million.
Correct.
On here.
Correct. There was, I'll, I'll pull the sheet out that I, for the next meeting, what we talked about, the, how we're gonna take care of that money. Some was going back to the capital improvement plan. We're gonna put it towards the four hundred thousand that we used for the fund balance this year. Some was going to stay in fund balance replenish, but we had taken out this year additional amount to offset, to mitigate the tax increase. But I'll pull the sheet out that I have and I'll send it around to you.
Thank you.
Anthony, just real quick, I can't, what's miscellaneous revenue?
Um, that was one that we, that I guess, that Mayor Anthony brought up early in the year. It's, it was a, a, part of it, there was three main items. There was a dog bite case, some of you may remember, that goes back several years. There was some money that came in on that. There was some money on another litigation claim. I'll pull it out for you as well, Anthony. I don't wanna talk it off my head. There was three main items that really sent it over, over the revenue. That was back, I think, early in the year that happened and that was discussed earlier back then, but I could bring it up again for you.
Thank you.
Next is appropriation transfers.
Appropriation transfers. You have some items in front of you that were sent down from the various departments. I was out last week and I thank Anita for putting this together. The largest item, obviously, as Councilor Diamond mentioned before, was the, was the police department looking to take some of the savings they had from some officers. One officer that left early throughout the year, one was on workers' comp, and to use it to do some other items. The other ones are, are basically minor.
So, the question comes up on the automotive equipment at forty thousand. Did that go out to bid or is it going out to bid?
I believe their intention was to, I think they had asked for three or four vehicles next year and they received three or something to that effect. They will go up, they'll be on, on bid, yes. So it'll be on the state bid price.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So it's gonna marry up with the piece they were given in the capital plan so they could buy the number that they truly had in mind from the beginning.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfers as presented.
Second?
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
And Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is tax refunds.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Candelora.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Miller.
Yes.
Councilor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Viglione.
Yes.
Councilor Zampiano.
Yes.
All right, next is motion to set the mill rate, which is nine eight.
This just basically closes the loop on the budget process based on the outcome of the referendum vote. This probably should have happened earlier in the month and, or maybe even last month for that matter, and just basically-
even last month for that matter, and just basically sets the mill rate at thirty-three point three nine and authorizes the town manager to sign the rate book for collection of taxes.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby sets the mill rate for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen fiscal year at thirty-three point three nine mills and further authorizes Michael T. Paulus, town manager, to sign the rate book for the collection of taxes on July first, two thousand eighteen, and January first, two thousand nineteen.
Second. Board of New Business. Yeah, um, discussion. Role call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleone.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
It's getting to be that time of year, I have a town manager performance evaluation form that we want to get out to the council so they can basically fill out and also for Michael to make up his goals and accomplishments that he has for next year and what he accomplished this year, so we could sit down and conduct that evaluation out of the front. Basically, I just want somebody to add I to the agenda under New Business Retail Manager Evaluation and, if you get that in.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item I to Town Manager Evaluation.
Second.
Role call, discussion, sorry, role call.
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleone.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're on item I.
Okay, so, we, we have an evaluation form, I'm not sure if this is the last one we used.
It was, yes, it is.
Yes, okay, so I'll send it down to Michael for you to make copies and get it out to the councillors. So they can fill it out and then.
But doesn't that usually come with like a self-evaluate, I mean, for Michael to write something up to us?
He usually writes his goals and what he accomplished, you know, and that's what I recollect.
We, I know we did use that last.
Right, but I mean, because there's some council members that are new on here, it's unfair, just to go through and that's sort of like a rating scale and stuff, so, didn't you usually write something up to go with it, Nick, Michael?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Just submit it. So I, I, I think the July tenth meeting is probably a little quick to get that on, that it should probably go to the August meeting to give Michael some time to write up his narrative to go along with the form. And then gives us time to complete it and.
Give it back.
And get it back, so I, my guess would be the August meeting would be a, a better time than to try to do it for the July tenth meeting.
Is that, does the town manager do a self-evaluation also?
That's, that's what Rose is talking about.
Oh, I, oh, I didn't know that, you meant, that's what you meant by the narrative, okay.
That's the self-evaluation that gets sent along with that form.
Along with the form.
Okay.
All right, so, your motion is the August meeting, gotta be back by, so the councillors can discuss it, so get, try to get it back before so we could get it mailed to.
Get it back to you, to you?
To the mayor, right.
Yeah, you can send it back to me. And then, just in case of the town hall, so we could, um, we could get it together. Role call.
I don't know that there's.
There wasn't a motion made.
You.
I thought you, I thought you made a motion.
I just made the motion to amend, to amend the agenda.
But then, didn't you indicate that we do this by August tenth?
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't put it in motion for, it was just discussion part, so if we want a motion, um, I guess I'll make a motion that, um, we do the town manager evaluation at the August meeting and evaluations, that the town manager will get his self-evaluation and the form out to all council members and do back to the mayor by August, what, sixth?
Let's say we could be four.
Yeah, so it would say August sixth, that's a Monday.
Second.
Discussion. Role call.
Okay, Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Candelaure.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Rose.
Yes.
Councillor Bigleone.
Yes.